Representatives? Oh, okay, we'll do that first. Okay. Okay.
Yeah, I had that few hours.
So as many of you know, Rob is at Hatfield. We are very fortunate. We have Angel who has always been there for us since we started in this department. Always there to help us out with all of our community service events. Always there to help me out. We're losing not only Rob, but Angel as well. So we're just explosive to market our appreciation for everything that you have done for us as a department. So, thank you so much.
Can everyone hear me okay? Wonderful. So, Rob, I have two citations. One of them is from Senator Colette, which I'll read first. The senator could not be with us this evening. I am State Representative Steve Malagary, Representative 53th Legislative District, which is within the township that borders Hatfield and Lansdale. Those three words are one, two, and three. To the supervisors, thank you for having me here tonight. Solicitor and Sheriff Kilkeny, thank you for having me as well. It's great to see so many familiar faces and friends as well. So, from Senator Colette, there's a letter in here which I will not read. However, I will read the proclamation for you. So, whereas the Senator of Pennsylvania is always pleased to recognize those individuals who contribute in a meaningful way toward the well-being of their communities and this Commonwealth. And whereas Officer Robert Johnson is being lauded upon his retirement from the Montgomery Township Police Department concluding more than thirty-five years of dedicated service. Thirty-seven, I believe, exact, right? Given sake. Whereas Officer Johnson began his career with the Montgomery Township Police Department as a dispatcher on November fourth, nineteen eighty-eight, and became a recruitment recruit police officer on July twenty-eighth, nineteen eighty-nine. During his tenure, he has held the positions of field training officer, bicycle patrol officer, North Penn Pal officer, dare instructor, and community policing officer. Dedicated to his community Officer Johnson was active with several community policing activities and events, including child fingerprinting events, Toys for Tots, Shop with a Cop activities, Shop with a Cop Emergency Services Day, Junior Police Academy, and bicycle rodeos. I've done one of those. And he organized food drives and local parades. To his great credit, he received commendations for lifesaving merit and heroism, and he received the Crime Prevention Officer of the Year Award in twenty seventeen and the Local Montgomery County Chamber of Commerce Hometown Hero Award in twenty twenty-two. And whereas since his enlistment, Officer Johnson faithfully endeavored to preserve and protect the health, safety, and welfare of his fellow citizens. In the finest spirit of public service, he demonstrated exemplary knowledge, ability, and integrity in carrying out as many responsibilities and earned deep respect and gratitude for his tireless devotion to duty. Now therefore, the Senate of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania congratulates Officer Robert Johnson upon his well-deserved retirement affirmably states that he served the Montgomery Township Police Department and the community at large with distinction, offers best wishes for a much rewarding future. Congratulations. Signed, Senator Maria Colette. The President, Pro temp of the Senate, Kim Ward, and Michael Gertis, Secretary of the Senate.
Congratulations.
I'm sure you want to have a picture of that. If you want, you can do this. I'll read this one and then we'll do a second photo. So, on behalf of the House of Representatives, we have a citation that I'd like to read for Rob as well. A lot of the same things are within the duty aspects, but with from Representative Melissa Serrato and myself, we'd like to give this citation to you as well. Whereas the House of Representatives of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania takes great pleasure in recognizing those citizens who selfishly devote their lives to ensuring the safety of the residents of the communities and ultimately of all the people of this great Commonwealth. And whereas Officer Robert Johnson is being honored upon his April fourteenth, twenty twenty-four retirement after more than thirty-five years of dedicated and distinguished service in the Montgomery Township Police Department, and whereas hired by the Township Police Department as a dispatcher on November fourth, nineteen eighty-eight, I'm not going to read through all of the details, but I will say that they add the National Night Out and the Community Days Halloween event, also the Coffee with a Cop, Coloring with a Cop, Prescription Collection Events, the Bicycle Rodeo, Candy Giveaways, Child Fingerprinting Events, and Child Reading Programs. Now therefore, the House of Representatives of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania pays a respectful tribute to Officer Robert J. Johnson upon his richly deserved retirement notes. With pride and gratitude, his record of service, which far exceeds those standards normally described as exemplary, offers best wishes for every future success and happiness and directs at a copy of the citation presented to you this evening. Congratulations on your retirement. Much deserved, and we will miss you here in our community, but we know that you're very close by. So, congratulations. Thank you so much.
You're not done yet. Nope. Not done yet. Not done yet. So, so we have one more award today. Chief Tim Troxel from Towemanson Township, who's the president of the North Penn PAL, is here to make a presentation on behalf of the PAL organization. Rob has been instrumental in getting PAL off the ground in the North Penn area. I can honestly say without Rob's involvement and dedication, correct? This organization would not have survived. So, again, on behalf of all the members of the North Penn PAL, I'd like to make a presentation to Rob. So I'll turn it over to Chief Troxel.
He just stole my whole speech. That's okay. Between allergies and a cold, I'm not talking too loudly. For those of you who aren't aware, the six police departments that are encompassed by North Penn School District started a regional PAL program, Police Athletic League. It's been running for years. The chiefs of the six departments each take a two-year turn at president, running the organization. And literally, like Chief Bendig said, it wouldn't run without Rob. I'll give you a quick story. We have an event coming up. It's our first event without Rob, and we're not letting him go. We're kind of like the mafia. He's not really out. But we have our first event coming up without Rob, and it's a mini golf at Freddie Hill Farms, which is in Towemanson. And I, the chief of police of Towemanson, call Freddie Hill Farms. I'm like, hey, Chief Troxel, we have the golf event coming up. He's like, who? What? You're doing... I'm like, North Penn PAL? He's like, yeah, Rob calls. I'm like, no. Rob can't call anymore. Rob retired. I need you to help. So, that's the range Rob has through North Penn PAL. We don't recognize... I've been a part of PAL since I came to Towemanson as the chief. I'm in my fourth year now there. We don't regularly come out and give awards away, but he's been so dedicated and such a major part of making PAL work that I immediately reached out to the rest of the board and all of the officers and everybody who volunteers for PAL and said, I think we need to do something for Rob. And I almost got blown off my chair with the resounding absolutely. So, we had a bronze cast plaque made. This actually has your patch on it. It's got some cool details to recognize Rob for all of his years of dedicated service. I'll just read the inscription real quick. Officer Robert Johnson, Montgomery Township Police, in heartfelt appreciation and recognition for the years of dedicated service you provided to the North Penn PAL program and the community youth that it serves. Your unwavering and selfless service improved the lives of everyone involved with the PAL program, us included. Thank you from everyone at North Penn PAL. Thank you, everyone. This is a... It's a final thing, and it's kind of tough for me. But it's been amazing. And just remember, you all are my family. You really are. Twenty-year-old, nineteen-year-old kid, I started here, and I was this, that. I was a kid. And it was incredible, and you all raised me. So, thank you. I first would like to thank the Board of Supervisors for recognizing my years of service, and I thank you so much for this. It was an absolute honor to serve. I would like to say thank you to my coworkers, past and present, for your friendship and for getting me here to this moment safely. I would like to thank... I've worked for two chiefs of police, Chief Scott Bendig and Chief Richard Brady, and I'd like to thank them both for their support throughout my years. And I would like to thank Lieutenant Bill Peoples for his support as my immediate supervisor during my position as the department's community policing liaison for the past nine years. And I must thank my wife, Angel. We are celebrating our thirty years of marriage this year, and she's has truly been my rock, and I can't begin to thank her enough for her love and her support. And lastly, I would like to say thank you to everyone that I've had the honor of serving in and around Montgomery Township. I have met so many great people over the past thirty-five years, and I'll miss you also very much. Thank you very much. Thank you so much.
Sorry, David. What's up?
Moving on to our item number five, public comment. Persons wishing to make public comment during this meeting on any items not listed on the agenda may do so at this time. Please come forward to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Public comment? Item number six. We're looking for the motion to approve the consent agenda as presented for the following. The minutes of the April eighth, twenty twenty-four board meeting and payment of the April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four bills.
Does someone move?
Second.
All those in favor?
All those, thank you. Thank you.
Item number seven. We have our conditional use application. C twenty, C dash twenty-four dash zero zero one. For RE Plus Airport Square LLC. And Mary Ann McConnell.
Drive-through on the pad site within Airport Square Shopping Center. The applicant is requesting conditional use approval for the proposed satellite use in accordance with Sections two thirty ninety-one point one and two thirty-one fifty-six point two of the Code of Montgomery Township. Township staff and consultants have had the opportunity to review the details of the plan, and the corresponding review letters are in your packet. This application was presented and reviewed by the Planning Commission at their April eighteenth, twenty twenty-four public meeting. The minutes, actually, the memo from that meeting is included in your packet. As this is a public hearing, the township solicitor shall guide you through the hearing process and handle details on behalf of the township.
Sure. As far as where... Perhaps suggest a motion to open the public hearing.
Please. I'll move that we open the public hearing.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. We have a public hearing for conditional use as stated by Ms. McConnell. I'm going to go ahead and mark some exhibits for the record. B one will be a copy of the conditional use application filed two twenty-nine twenty-four. B two will be a proof of publication of legal notice of the hearing in the Reporter, our newspaper of general circulation, dated four eleven and four eighteen twenty-four. B three will be a proof of notice to adjoining landowners pursuant to an April third, two thousand twenty-four notice letter from the township and a list of properties mailed to the thirty-two adjoining owners. B four will be the Gilmore Review Letter dated three twenty-eight twenty-four. B five will be the Montgomery County Planning Commission Letter dated three eighteen twenty-four. B six will be the Montgomery Township Fire Department's Review dated three four twenty-four. B seven will be the Montgomery Township Police Department's Review dated three twenty-two twenty-four. And B eight will be the zoning review prepared by Ms. McConnell on four one twenty-four. I also just received a series package from Mr. Freemuth, the attorney for the applicant here, and I'm going to mention those in the record. A one will be a copy of CV of Richard Kloss. A two will be a certified copy of the deed. A three will be an overall site plan. A four will be the existing conditions plan. A five will be the site plan. A six will be the Bowler Engineer Response to a Conditional Use Review Letter. Because this is a conditional use hearing, the Board of Supervisors is sitting in a quasi-judicial format here, akin to a zoning hearing board. So, we... This here would be a permitted use, and then there would have to be several criteria that Mr. Freemuth is going to have to present to see that they meet under our ordinance two thirty-nine-one dash one, satellite uses. Because it's a conditional use hearing, people have the opportunity to request what's called party status. Party status is that you would have the opportunity to call witnesses. You would have the opportunity to cross-examine witnesses that either the township called, Mr. Freemuth, or any other party called. Just because to request party status doesn't mean you don't have the opportunity to comment. You have the opportunity to comment at the end of this hearing. But I want to see upfront, is anybody requesting party status for this hearing? Okay. Hearing that nobody has said they're asking for party status. I want to say previously, I sent an email yesterday to Mr. Freemuth and basically said what I would ask for is an offer of proof. An offer of proof is he will present exactly what his witnesses would say when called, and then you would have the opportunity to bring up these witnesses and ask them any specific kind of questions that they have afterwards. This was just a matter to save some possible time. If the board wants more inquiry of any of these witnesses, we, of course, can do a full, plume examination of them. So, do you have any witnesses you'd like to swear in?
I do. Good evening, everyone, for the record. My name is Andy Freemuth, attorney for the applicant. I was prepared to proceed with an offer of proof. I do have two witnesses here this evening that I can have sworn in now.
Why don't we just do that and then get it out of the way?
Yeah. Okay. First witness is Ron Kloss.
We both witnessed the state study full day. Ronald Kloss, K-L-O-S. You both sound square or firm with that's how you about to do it? It's just the whole truth and not the vote. I do.
Good evening again. Mr. Kloss is a licensed professional engineer, both in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and in New Jersey. He is employed by Bowler Engineering. Ron's CV is marked as Exhibit A one. Ron has prepared the plans in connection with this application. He is familiar with the township code as it applies to this project. He has been recognized as an expert professional engineer before many municipal bodies, and he is being offered this evening as an expert professional engineer. Minister Wodzenowski, who's also here, is a vice president of operations with Panera Bread. In that capacity, he has extensive knowledge of Panera's operations generally. He's also familiar with this application and the subject property. Of course, this evening, we are here to talk about the Airport Square Shopping Center property. That property is owned by the applicant. A copy of the deed that shows ownership of the property and the applicant is in the exhibit marked as Exhibit A two. As you heard Mary Ann mention, we are seeking approval this evening for a satellite pad site use at the shopping center for Panera Bread with a drive-through facility. As you all know, Panera is currently located in the main portion of the shopping center. They have been there with great success for approximately the past twenty years, serving the community as a restaurant, as an employer, and other capacities. Every five to seven years or so, Panera invests substantially in its locations with upgraded decor, upgraded equipment, upgraded facilities generally. They are past due for an upgrade at this location, and they have learned of the potential for a pad site in the shopping center. Pad site is a very attractive opportunity to Panera to provide a fresh look, to invest in its facilities, and the pad site would be in a prominent location, would provide great visibility for Panera, as well as the opportunity for a drive-through facility and an attractive outdoor dining area. There is a pending land development application in the township for this project, but obviously, the first step is this conditional use approval. If we are successful in obtaining conditional use approval, we would be back in front of this board on the land development plan with the process at some point in the future. This property is located in the S Shopping Center District. The use is retail and restaurant with outdoor dining service, drive-through or curb service, and that's a permitted use. However, to have this use in a satellite pad site as is being proposed, we are required to obtain this conditional use here this evening. So, what I'd like to do is walk you through the plan materials and the remaining exhibits in the booklet to introduce you in a little more detail to the proposal and to demonstrate to you that this proposal satisfies the criteria for this use in the zoning ordinance. So, if you go to Exhibit A three, which is also displayed up on the screen, it might be easier for you to look at the eleven by seventeen that I've provided, but that is the overall site plan for the shopping center. I'm sure you are all familiar with the site, but you can see Bethlehem Pike along the bottom of the plan, running north and south. General Hancock Boulevard runs along the rear of the shopping center to the top portion of the plan. Upper State Road is located on the south side of the shopping center to the right of the plan. In the center of the frontage on Bethlehem Pike, you see the jug handle, as we like to refer to it, which is the central access drive to the shopping center, which is essentially across Bethlehem Pike from Chick-fil-A. Just to the left of that, on the plan, you see the dark gray box, which is the proposed Panera Bread and drive-through pad site. We will see a close-up of this area in a moment, but its location is essentially just out in front of TJ Maxx. This plan contains two zoning data tables with all of the site design requirements and the satellite use building coverage requirements in the zoning ordinance. The application complies with all of those requirements. With regard to the satellite pad site use in particular, the zoning ordinance allows for these types of pad sites to take up no more than ten percent of the building area in the shopping center. With this proposed Panera, pad sites in the shopping center will comprise seven point eight six six percent of the building area, which is in compliance with your zoning ordinance. If we turn to what's been marked A four, I also put it up on the screen here. This just shows you the existing condition of the area where the Panera Bread will be located. You can see from this plan, this area is currently entirely impervious surface today, and it consists of what is essentially unused parking in the shopping center. If we go to what's been marked A five, this is a color-rendered close-up of the proposed pad site and the Panera Bread restaurant. This plan has been revised slightly since the initial application. Notably, we have incorporated into this plan the landscape information from the landscape plan that was submitted with the land development application. Obviously, that adds color to the plan, but it also shows you the proposed landscaping. An additional section of sidewalk has also been added to this plan in response to the review comments in the township consultant's letters, which I will talk about in more detail in a moment. With the addition of the required landscaping islands and the pad site area, as you can see in comparison to the last exhibit, the impervious coverage on the site is actually going down, and this area will be a lot greener than it is today. This Panera restaurant will be four thousand three hundred square feet. It will have an outdoor patio area that's five hundred and fifty-six square feet. As you can see, access to the pad site will be through the existing internal access drives. If you can picture the shopping center for a minute, as you're driving down the central access drive, looking all the way back towards General Hancock Boulevard with Alta to your right and TJ Maxx to your left, this Panera site is actually right down to the left of you, if that visual helps. If I can just turn your attention back to the plan, you can see that there is a drive-through lane circulating around the proposed restaurant building. The vehicle stacking that is shown on this plan satisfies the requirements of zoning ordinance. You can also see that a bypass lane is proposed in order to provide the ability for anybody to exit the drive-through lane for whatever reason in the event that they have to. In addition to meeting the stacking requirements in the zoning ordinance, the drive-through actually functioned very well for Panera, which is not an intensive drive-through use based on the statistics that have been gathered by the company. Panera typically sees more dine-in and pickup activity, and although they have peak hours, of course, customer activity is typically spread out throughout the day, which really decreases the intensity of the drive-through lane. All of the required pedestrian connectivity between the parking and the restaurant are detailed on this plan. This is not shown in your plan materials, but truck turning templates have been provided to the township by our engineer, which show that a... to the township by our engineer, which show that emergency vehicles, as well as the delivery trucks that are expected by Panera have the required access to this site. Panera deliveries occur off-hours, approximately three times per week, and that process lasts about 30 minutes. Deliveries are made by a Panera distributor, so Panera has the ability to reasonably control those deliveries. Therefore, if there's an issue at any time with deliveries, it can be addressed efficiently. Although a delivery space is not specifically called out on the plan, there is adequate space for delivery, and we've already been in communication with the township about designating an area for deliveries in a location that satisfies the township's consultants. As noted in the review letters, we have requested several partial waivers with respect to the landscaping requirements in the subdivision of land development ordinance. Of course, we will have to address landscaping as part of the land development approval process if we're fortunate enough to obtain conditional use approval this evening. So hopefully, we'll be back in front of this board and in front of your planning commission again on landscaping matters. However, as you can see from Exhibit A5, the property owner is proposing to plant a number of shade trees and shrubs, although those proposed plantings only partially satisfy the ordinance requirements, they are a significant improvement over what exists today, and they are consistent with what exists in the shopping center today as well. From a practical standpoint, there is a balance that we're trying to achieve between ensuring that there is appropriate landscaping on this site while also making sure that this Panera Bread is visible from both outside the site and from both inside the site so that this Panera location can be as successful as possible. Visibility at this location is particularly tricky, given the fact that it sits somewhat below grade of Bethlehem Pike and the access drive. So with this plan, we are trying to avoid planting this pad site to the point where it obstructs visibility. We think that this plan achieves that balance, but of course, again, hopefully, we'll be back in front of you again to talk in more detail about the landscaping. Onto the pedestrian connection comments that you may have seen in the review letters from your consultants. The applicant certainly agrees that pedestrian connectivity is an important topic, and actually, this owner, property owner, has a history of providing pedestrian connections each and every time it comes into the township for approvals in furtherance of the township's objectives in this area with respect to pedestrian connections. In particular, sidewalks and ramps were provided, I think most recently with the Shake Shack project, but also with Bonefish, there's sidewalk out in front of Bethlehem Pike, both those pad sites. The challenge, of course, with addressing all of the pedestrian connectivity issues at one time is that this is a very large site, it's got a lot of frontage on several different roads, and obviously, this is a shopping center that's been approved and it's already been constructed. There are also, as I mentioned, some grade issues along the main access drive and on one side, the north side, and on the south side, as you probably know from driving in there, there's a lot of mature trees and existing vegetation that would really need to be removed in the event that a sidewalk was ever to come down that main access drive. However, in response to the comments, we did look critically at this plan and have added a portion of sidewalk to the pad site. I think it would probably be beneficial if I pointed this out to you. So I'm just going to grab this large one here. Again, it's A5, but the portion of sidewalk that was added in response to the review comments would be this portion of sidewalk right in this location, which will connect via crosswalk to the main shopping center. This is TJ Maxx right here. With this connection, you now have a pedestrian connection all the way from the ADA accessible crossing from the mall site across Bethlehem Pike through the Panera Bread site to the main shopping center, which we think is a significant connection. It's also consistent with the township's study of pedestrian connectivity in this location, albeit it's in a different location than in that study, but it does serve to make this connection. If you flip back to the overall site plan, to the extent that you want to see the connection on A3, near the jug handle. This location, you have the crossing across Bethlehem Pike to the mall site, and with this connection here to the main shopping center, you can now traverse all the way through the Panera to the main shopping center for pedestrian access, and this is Exhibit A3 I'm referring to. One comment we also received from the police department concerns the one access point of the Panera site to the central drive. I'll point that also out on Exhibit A3. It's this access point right here. This is a four-way stop in this location. There was concern about vehicle queuing and vehicles seeking access to the Panera site. We did ask our engineers to review that issue. They don't see it as a concern, given the volumes that they've seen of traffic in front of TJ Maxx and home sense, so any issues with conflict should be few and far between in that location. The last exhibit in the package is Exhibit A6. That's a response letter that Bowler prepared in response to the township engineer's review letter, as well as the police department's comment. Based on this offer of proof, I would submit to you that the materials demonstrate compliance with your satellite pad site use requirements in Section 230-91.1 zoning ordinance. The application also complies with the outdoor dining regulations, and to the extent that any of those outdoor dining area regulations are forward-looking and restrictive on its use, both the applicant and Panera will comply with those requirements. And lastly, I believe that the application will satisfy the general standards and criteria for conditional uses in your zoning ordinance. So with that offer of proof, I'm going to ask my two witnesses to adopt my statements as their testimony, and then we're happy to answer any questions that you have. So we'll start with Ron Klos. Ron, you were here for my offer of proof, correct?
Yes, I was.
Okay. And would you agree with the statements that I made?
Yes, I do.
And would you adopt them as your own testimony?
Yes, I would.
And Paul? I'll ask you the same questions, I hope. You were here for my statements, is that correct?
Yes.
Would you agree that they were accurate?
I do.
And would you adopt them as your testimony?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So supervisor Ware, you or any of the board members have any questions?
Oh, I'll do, I'll start. So first, let me say I appreciate your reference to our sidewalk study. Walkability is very important to us and has been consistently an issue that we brought before any applicant. And what I'd like to know is, are you amenable to extending along Bethlehem Pike the sidewalk to the next intersection along the frontage? Because that is going to be another access, you know, from a pedestrian standpoint, another way that pedestrians could potentially come and access that site.
I'm just going to look at A3, just so we all understand where you might be talking about, that Bethlehem Pike in this location here?
That's going the other way. From, yes.
Yes, that way, from that direction.
Oh, that's an area that we haven't looked at at this point, because I'm not sure that it was part of the study, that going north on Bethlehem Pike?
Yes.
Yeah, I haven't gotten into the weeds there either, but if it's a feasible consideration, that's what we're asking.
Yeah, I mean, that's something we haven't looked at, we'd have to look at it. I don't think that Ron has looked at grates or any of the trees in those areas, just because it wasn't part of the study, moving north in that direction, but that's something we might be able to look at.
Yeah, I'd offer, as Andy said, we were looking at the study, and the study did bring people into that driveway and then back to the main shopping center. So that was our area of focus for this application, which is why we agreed to extend the sidewalk from this pad site up to TJ Maxx, and then that gets you in either direction along the median area. We can certainly look at that as part of our land development application. I can make any commitments right now, but we certainly can agree to look at it and see whether we can do something along that area. I wasn't prepared, because we were following the study, which was part of the comments, was provide pedestrian connectivity consistent with what the study shows.
Okay, and if it is feasible, are you willing to commit that you would install that sidewalk there?
Yeah, I guess we can't commit at the moment, because we haven't looked at what would entail, you know, all of the details with constructing the sidewalk in that location. But we are committed to evaluating it, and certainly, we have to discuss that with the township as part of the land development application. Absolutely.
And then in terms of the congestion related to that four-way stop, the note that was made by our chief of police with his concerns, I'm just curious, because our traffic engineer is here, Damon Drummond with Gomar and Associates, and I was wondering if you had also looked at the data associated with that traffic and whether you were satisfied that that would not be an issue?
And for the record, that's the comment in B7. Yes.
Yeah, I weighed that, that particular intersection. We looked at the other intersections, but that's something we'll look at a little bit more and we'll want to be back on that. There is some queuing there. I agree with the chief that issue, you have that to make sure there are not any issues to share. Damon Drummond, Gomar and Associates. Anything?
And how about this, just for the record, what's swearing Mr. Drummond? Just, I guess he did comment on this, and just take that step.
So I swear that somebody gave you the truth, the whole truth and not the rest of it. Yes, everything.
And Mr. Drummond, can you describe your role with the township?
I am the traffic engineer with the township.
And you previously made a statement on the record here, and you adopt that statement, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
While we're discussing that same intersection, that is an intersection that does get traffic, and it's also a little confusing because the traffic changed there within the past, I want to say, five or seven years, where it used to be a two-way stop and now is a four-way stop. So I think that adds to the confusion that people that have lived here for a while don't know, what am I supposed to do here? I think I can just go through, and they don't know. I'm wondering, because now we're encouraging pedestrians even more so there, because it used to be just cars for the most part, but with this restaurant being here and new sidewalks put in, I'm wondering if we can have bigger or more visible stop signs, just to make sure that cars know pedestrians have it right away, something like that. I'm just, I'm very concerned about adding more people walking around where people aren't used to it. We just have to adjust to that a little bit more, and maybe some signs could help with that.
I think we can do something with the signs. I will point out, as far as the pedestrian connectivity goes, if you look at the color rendering, that...
That's Exhibit A5.
Yeah.
We're bringing pedestrians up through the landscape island.
Right.
We're also bringing them away from that intersection.
Okay, yes.
This gets to the ADA crossings, which are further away from that, so that was part of our rationale, there was, instead of bringing directly across, which is right at that four-way intersection, pull them further away so that you eliminate the pedestrian and vehicular conflicts.
Right. What may happen, though, is I love how you have the island there with maybe some greenery. I'm a tree person, so I love that. But if you, they may come towards TJ Maxx, but then they may be going over to the Alta and to the Michaels area towards Marshalls, and with that, so if they're not going that way, you know, that may still draw them through, like that may be an indirect way, but they still may cross that, pass through that intersection more so.
Perhaps there's a way to encourage them to actually go further away from the intersection and get to the main site and then go in that direction across the access drive.
Could you include some wayfinding for pedestrians, like specifically, you know, pointing pedestrians to the sidewalk?
Yeah, I don't think that's a problem. Certainly, the applicant did that as part of previous applications from a vehicular standpoint, you'll see a lot more wayfinding signs there for vehicles, and I think the signs in that area probably would make sense to have the pedestrian in the correct direction.
And you would submit that that would be a condition of any approval, that you'd add more wayfindings on it?
Yes.
Okay. Satisfaction of the traffic engineer?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
And what about, you made comments about the landscaping not needing the requirements, and I understand your concern about visibility from the road. I was wondering whether an additional rain guard might be an acceptable alternative?
Well, we are for proposing stormwater management.
Right.
The facility is a subsurface stormwater management area, so a lower rain guard providing subsurface stormwater management within a partial infiltration component. So to meet not only township's requirements, but we have to go to County Conservation District and EP for MPDS currently for this application, because we are a little one for disturbance. So there is a stormwater component built in, it may not be visible when you look at the plan, but it is there included as part of our design documents, it'll be within the grading, stormwater plan shown on our land development application.
It's just a way to provide some additional green space that also would assist you in your stormwater plan.
And I think, as Andy pointed out, we are also adding roughly 750 square foot of green space in this area. As I said, this is one of our large asphalt area right now, so you'll see it broken up pretty well with landscaping and some streets. The waivers that we would be requesting as part of our land development are tied to mostly shrubs, which are screening buffers that are required along frontages. As we said, this kind of sits low, so to add them along the perimeter of the parking area, it doesn't quite make that much sense, because you do have an elevation difference that kind of screens those headlights, and then there's some shade trees and ornamental trees that we would be asking for.
Those are the three questions that I had. The other question I have is about the drive-through. I know that the other two drive-throughs in that, which would be at Cava and Shake Shack, their drive-throughs are just mobile order drive-throughs, which is an interesting new situation, because people are doing more drive, more mobile ordering. So, and I know that you have in your restaurant, you know, shelving and so forth for people that are doing the Uber Eats and whatever other delivery services may be available to people. So would this drive-through be available to the people that do Uber Eats and things like that? Would that be included in that, or is that a separate?
The drive-through for Panera is only about 20% sales, which is low competitive fast food restaurants, which has a double drive-through.
Right.
And people can use their mobile app to pick up, so we do have a pick-up option to the drive-through, so we feel like we rarely get past six or seven parts, and it actually has a GPS tracker, so when the GPS pulls up, it knows you're in queue, so we can get streaming out pretty quickly. So we rolled that out about a year ago in our drive-through cafes, so out of that 20% drive-through, half of it now is people just picking up, so they're proper relatively quickly. And our sales are spread out now throughout the day. It's not as peaky much as it used to be with the office workers, so the sales can be pretty spread out, and we feel like it will keep the traffic at a reasonable level.
Okay. So it's not a requirement that you have to do it on your mobile to pick up the drive-through, if someone can just come through?
The complexity of the menu on like a fast food restaurant, most people will pre-order for Panera these days.
Any other questions?
If there's no more board comments?
I have one more question, sorry. As soon as you say that. About the deliveries, three times a week deliveries from the trucks, you mentioned that there is not a designated spot. You are working with someone to make sure, because I know that, would those be during the day deliveries or during the evening?
They're off-hours, so yeah, overnight?
Yeah, overnight, off, between 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM.
Okay, because I just want to make sure that we're not blocking people in. I know at some other restaurants, not yours, one of your competitors, actually, they will oftentimes have deliveries and block people in that are actually sitting in and eating, and then you can't leave. So thank you for making that off-hours, that is, makes it a lot better for the experience of the people that are eating at your place.
Yeah, and as I mentioned, there are Panera Yeah, and as I mentioned, there are Panera distributors who do the deliveries, so there is some degree of control that Panera has over them to deal with any of those issues to the extent that they ever crop up.
Okay. Well, thank you for that.
If there's no more board comment, I would suggest supervisor, where are you opening up the public comment?
Okay, any public comment with regard to the conditional use application?
If there is no public comment, the board can go ahead. They want more information, continue this hearing to a later date or close the hearing and take action. I believe that's what staff is recommending. Is that correct, Ms. McConnell?
Yes.
Okay. So then you would perhaps make a motion to close the public.
Yeah, we'll make a motion to close the case.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And if we're ready to make a motion, I make a motion to permit the proposed restaurant satellite use on the property located at eight oh one Bethlehem Pike with conditions if required. Or motion to deny the proposed restaurant satellite use on the property.
So we did stipulate a few.
Yeah, with changes.
With changes, right.
With our changes that we.
Yeah, and the applicant would agree. We have to issue a written decision within forty-five days. The applicant has agreed on the record as to the conditions related to wayfinding and various other things.
Yeah.
That would be included in the written decision.
Okay.
Thinking. Second.
I will second the motion to approve. With conditions.
With conditions. Motion to approve with conditions.
All in favor? All in favor? Say aye.
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 Thank you very much.
You're good.
Yeah, thanks for your time.
Okay.
Thank you. I had dinner last night.
I had a, I had a bread bowl for lunch.
I had a stupid half a sandwich. Pick two. I know.
Mary Mother Redeemer Church, Marion McConnell. The township has received a letter dated March twenty-second, twenty twenty-four from the MMR Summer Festival Chairman, requesting the township to consider waiving the fees for the associated permits for their annual summer festival to be held June eighteenth to the twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. The board has waived these fees in the past for this event and they are calculated to be a total of a hundred and forty-nine dollars and fifty cents for the special event and electric permit fee. That's pretty straightforward. Do we have any questions or concerns with leaving fees? I know we've done this in the past. Yeah, we've done this. Yeah.
We're good.
Okay, motion to waive the, motion to waive the fees associated with the permits for Mary, Mother of the Redeemer of the Church Annual Summer Festival.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next, item eleven, review of zoning hearing board application. So include it in our packet. Marion. Including your packet is a summary of an application before the zoning hearing board scheduled for their May first, twenty twenty-four meeting. The application is number two four zero four zero 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 one, the venue at Montgomery for the Montgomery Mall location. The applicants were previously granted a use variance to allow their proposed indoor recreation amusement venue space. The applicant currently requests an expansion of the use variance granted pursuant to section two thirty ninety-four A of the Code of Montgomery Township to permit bartender dispense client-supplied alcoholic beverages. The board may remain neutral on the application and let the zoning hearing board render a decision based on the testimony presented, or the board may opt to send the solicitor's office to oppose an application. This action would require motion, second, and vote of the board. And so can I ask a question there? When we say the solicitor to oppose, can we send our solicitor to be in favor of it for us too? So either way.
Yep. You can send us to oppose. You can send us to support. You can send us to monitor. Don't, we don't get sent in support very often, but it happens.
Okay, any questions, concerns, comments?
Well, I'll start by saying that when this came before the board on a prior occasion and it was brought to a vote and the board, the majority of the board, we were split in this decision, voted to oppose. I stood on the side of the applicant and I do feel like this is a good use for this space in the mall and that they're at a competitive disadvantage if they're not able to allow BYOB at that particular facility. I heard the concerns that were expressed by staff and I, and I think that they were legitimate, but I also didn't feel like we should oppose this use there or oppose, oppose, oppose it in front of the zoning hearing board. So I'm happy to see that they are coming before the zoning hearing board again. And I would encourage my fellow board members, my colleagues here to take a harder look at this. And this is, I think, a good use for that space. It's good for traffic for the mall. And I don't think that this business is really going to survive without being able to offer BYOB. As long as they have a solid plan in place and the proper policies and protocols and procedures and contracts to do it responsibly.
Thank you for that. Are you done?
Yes.
Okay. Never done, but I also wanted to say for the record, the previous time, I don't think it was clear. We, it feels as if it was represented to us as a BYOB. And with BYOB, I think the expectation could be out of our own experiences that everyone brings stuff along and puts it at their table and just distributes it without supervision, any sort of overview. And I feel as if that is not what they were, what was presented to the zoning hearing board. So I think it was very hard for us to, when we actually looked what was presented, that's not what the understanding was as it was presented to us in the, when we, when it was opposed. So I want to just say, let's take another look because I feel as if now with this, the certified, trained and insured bartenders that would be there as well as a limited serving time, that that is something that is something that's a reasonable request. And, and for a, for a venue like the venue, you'd like to think that this is something that could survive without alcohol, beer, wine, or alcohol available. And unfortunately, that is the way the world is, is moving this, these days. So I just think that for our community, this is actually a need in our community. A lot of people want to have that space and to have them not having to drive so far to do so. And right within our own community, I think it would meet the needs of what our residents and community members would like as well as supporting not only the small, the small business of the venue, but also the bartending companies that they would be contracting with and the vendors of, for the food as well.
And I guess I'm going to go ahead and disagree with the understanding of the BYOB. I understood them to mean that the people who are, the renters would actually bring in that alcohol. So I don't know where that disconnect may have come from. That's where my understanding was with that. I don't see enough of a hardship or a change that has changed from the last time to go ahead with this application. That's my general feeling on it. And so that's a question I have. I really would like to understand what has changed from the first application to now. So that's a question. Because I noticed on the, when I looked at the, the write-up that was, you know, the actual hearing, I guess, or the zoning and hearing, it said with bartender, which is what this is. So I'm just trying to understand where there's a difference with before and now. I don't know if I have an answer to that.
But we have, can we have people from, to speak upon that? Is that okay to do that?
Yeah.
I would love to.
So.
So when I think of BYOB, I did not understand that it was with bartender. I think of a BYOB as, I've been to BYOBs where you bring your own, it's on your table and you help yourself kind of thing. So with bartender does change things and I just want to just understand that more.
We are not.
So man, you could just identify yourself for the record.
Please, your name. Just your name and, yeah, your name and your, your space here.
I'm Janet Walker. I'm with the venue at Montgomery and the Montgomery Mall. BYOB means that somebody can come in and bring anything. And one of the things at the last zoning hearing we had, it was talked about somebody water in the bottles and stuff like that. We're contained to the renters. You have to be a renter. You have to follow our policy. Our policy says that we have our certified bartenders and we have our, our licensed security company. So it's just the renters that will be able to bring their own alcohol and not anybody can come and put it on the table like at a restaurant or anything like that. That is not what we allow.
Just say, say your name too, please.
Sorry, I'm a little hyped.
You're a little tired.
My name is Julius Walker. I'm also a staff member at the venue Montgomery. My background, I own audio visual IT firm. We do about a little over a hundred events throughout the year, providing audio visual production. We travel with a few national clients doing production work, so I'm very familiar with the security policies, alcohol distribution throughout the different events. When we first went through the application, it was presented as a BYOB, which I understand somebody can bring in a Heineken and sit at the table and enjoy themselves. What we do at most events, there is a certain amount of time alcohol can be served. It's served by certified bartenders. There are security based off the number of individuals and that cutoff time happens. That's what we wanted to present on this run. One of the questions that was asked in the last meeting is everybody in the, in our staff that has experience. We make a significant amount of money doing events and have experience on putting on those events. So at that time, it wasn't properly presented and it was approached differently between the legal representatives, representation of the township. So we understand what was transmitted back to us. We made modifications to make it seem that we are having a certified bartender there that will be serving. So no one can actually bring in alcohol. They have to come through the freight elevator. It is secured by the bartenders, which is being done. We do a lot even with 12th Street Catering, so we understand how that works and there'll be a cutoff when alcohol will be, be done. So the difference I believe is that when it's been tried before, it's just that anybody can go in their trunk, bring any type of alcohol in and it not be controlled. That is not going to occur at the venue. And we've had multiple events, even the event with some individuals here. We know how to handle situations and be proactive instead of reactive. So that, that's our presentation that we wanted to bring to you guys today.
Thank you for that explanation. The, just procedurally, I want to make sure that you're aware of, you know, our role in this process. Because, you know, we are not the, the body of authority as it relates to this. You're going to have to go before the zoning hearing board. Our option is to remain neutral to oppose or support your application. And as you know, in the past, we sent our solicitor there in opposition, you know, and they highlighted some of the deficiencies in the application. I feel as if you have responded to some of these, but to my colleague, my colleague's point about is this the same application? This is, I guess, my concern from you, for, for you from a procedural standpoint. So is this a substantially different application from the, the last one?
Yeah, so the last application was presented as a BYOB. And that's, it was used multiple times during the meeting. We're represented as, it's a controlled environment where the rental, the person that is renting actually procures alcohol and is controlled by a certified bartender, which happens at majority of every venue in this area and surrounding areas. So the one thing that was addressed as well is the hardship that it presents. So from a level of the differences, majority of events that will come through the facility that has come through that we had to turn away, they would like to enjoy by having some type of alcohol involved, whether it's a wedding. And those are some of the challenges we have to turn away and they go to other venues where it's easily done. So for us to survive there, kiddie parties are great, but they're not going to be sustainable. And we've had a couple of events there where it's been an economic impact for the mall and a lot of the people in the mall have seen revenue generation from our venue. But for us to be sustainable and actually be a for-profit company, having alcohol consumption in a controlled manner will be very, very, very needed.
So you're distinguishing that because it's the renter who is contracting with the, our tender and security firms.
Yes.
That you're, so the distinguishment is that it's the renters that you want to be allowed to be wild, to have BYOB, not, not.
That's consistent with the notes of testimony from the September sixth, twenty twenty-three zoning hearing board. That's what went down there as well. So I don't see what the change is.
So, so the BYOB means that anybody is allowed to bring alcohol in. So various events that we have done, I can personally go to my car, secure alcohol from the local wine and spirit and bring it into the venue. So what we're presenting now is that it's not the case. It has to be done through a renter and it has to be actually poured by a certified bartender where an individual cannot have wine at their table that they decide to purchase. It has to come through the freight elevator and it's controlled by a certified bartender. So that is what our application and our approach is for, for this application today.
And again, that's the testimony that was given back in September of twenty twenty-three with freight elevator with all of that as well.
So I want to clarify that when we said we wanted to send the solicitor to oppose, I don't know that that was our understanding. I feel as if the presentation that was given at that meeting that you're, that you're referencing, which I agree, is very similar to this one. However, I feel as if that wasn't what was presented to us when we were first looking, looking at this and then we ended up sending our solicitor to. So that, that was the breakdown, not between the zoning hearing board and tonight and what will be seen again. It was when, when we sent to oppose, it feels as if they already had that negative connotation.
But we already understood that BYOB to them meant whoever was the renter, whoever contracted with them, that's who would be bringing in the alcohol. No, I didn't understand it that way.
I did understand. Before I even read this, I'm like, why are we doing this again?
Again, when I think BYOB, I think of BYOB events I've been to, where if you go to a restaurant and it's BYOB, I bring my bottle of wine with me. It's at my table. I'm pouring myself. So that's what I understand of BYOB. I didn't understand it to be when I read over and saw with bartender. I'm like, okay, that's.
But we discussed bartenders the last time as well.
I don't recall.
Before we sent. Yeah, okay.
So the, I mean, and I guess we're, you know, we're not going to litigate it, but here, you know, it's the zoning hearing board.
The zoning hearing board, correct. So our decision tonight is whether we send a solicitor or not. That, that's the bottom line right now.
One way or another, yes. Yeah.
I guess my opinion on this would be what we know now, regardless of what was presented to zoning hearing board, because none of us were there at the zoning hearing board. And we see the results of what was presented there tonight, but I feel as if that wasn't what was communicated to us and was clearly understood by all of the, all of the people here. So what I want to say is because we sent someone to appear in opposition, I feel as if we, if we appear neutral at this point, that they might, that it might be still interpreted as neutrality means we're not going to make a statement on it. And I feel as if that's an unfair disadvantage for this small business because that it might still be that, oh, the politicians don't want to make a statement because they're going to be at risk when it comes time to vote for whatever reason, so they don't want to take a statement on it. I don't, not saying that we feel, any of us feel that way. I'm saying they may interpret it that they want, the zoning hearing board wants, that we want the zoning hearing board to make that hard decision that we don't feel like making if we go neutral.
But the zoning hearing board is independent, is an independent board. They're an independent body. It's not, they're not doing power bidding. So whatever politics is involved with that.
It should be irrelevant.
Not, it's not an issue.
You know, and I don't know the answer to this question, but if the zoning hearing board didn't feel like this was a different take on this, would they have put it on their agenda?
It would need to be heard as, as well.
Yeah, I don't think that they're going to, I don't think that they were going to deny it outright. They would, they couldn't, after hearing a presentation, say this, it was raised judicata, it's already been done. They could take that. But I doubt the zoning hearing board solicitor would advise not to hear anything because that could create a procedural issue in a court of common.
It's still an application that needs to be heard.
Right, exactly. And the application would be a, you're barred from presenting again. This is the same thing and that's why we decided what we did. But you have to give them at least that day to present that. That's my take.
I had noticed in the hearing where it was listed, I think this was an add-on by your company to say, we'll only pour for three hours. And already, I guess, could be five hours, but you're only going to pour for three. Is there any flexibility with that, like maybe two hours versus three? Or is three the number that?
No. If that is contingency to be approved.
I was just curious.
It was topped at two hours. It's just for us to keep the venue at Montgomery as a successful, competitive venue based off all the venues that are in this area. It was something that we feel that needs to happen. So if it needs to be a two-hour pour, that's something we have to communicate directly with our renters and also the bartenders to say that we have a two-hour pour limit based off of township approval and we'll be more than happy to accommodate that.
Well, I'm definitely not opposed to it. I definitely feel that it's, I commend you guys for putting it back on the table again. What's the zoning hearing? So I'm not opposed to it. I absolutely think that it should be looked at again and hopefully we get it.
Well, I would be in favor of sending this listener and supported the application. I know from personal experience, you know, I run a business myself. We hosted a networking event recently for a business association. And, you know, we had the opportunity to bring it to our community and recreation center. Of course, the moment they heard that there was no alcohol allowed at our community and recreation center, we had to move it elsewhere. And this was a business association that, you know, these individuals weren't coming to get intoxicated. You know, it was an educational session that we were presenting to them, you know, but they, they wanted to have a beer with, you know, their hoagie while they sat through this seminar. So I just think that they, to be competitive, they need to be able to do this. And so I would be in favor of sending the solicitor and supported the application.
Just one reference, I recently did an event at the Enterprise Center in Philadelphia. We did a cocktail economics. So it was a small event with some wine and they worked on economics, helping small businesses get access to contracts in construction. So it was a great mingle event. So I feel like that's something we can actually have in this area with some of the small business associations where we can have an economics and cocktail where people can actually bid on contracts and learn how to do it where it comes to bonds. So it was a very successful event. It's about 200 individuals at a certain pour time. And those are the things that we're trying to do in the area to help the economic impact. So with this ability to be able to do that, it will allow other things to occur, not just parties, not just weddings. It's more of a diverse economic impact.
There's a spillover to the economy on that, so that's great.
I would not be in agreement to send the solicitor in favor of if we're going to go one way or the other. I would be opposed to it. I would send him to oppose, but if we're not sending, if we don't send him at all and let the zoning hearing board do their job, I think, I think we can, that, that would be okay with me. That would be something that I might be comfortable with. The other question that I would have is the hard liquor. Is there a way that you just say it's beer and wine only and not hard liquor? Is that something that you'd be willing to consider?
So in, as a smart business decision, we would consider it. I just ask everybody to look into every event that you have personally been to. And it sometimes there's not really that. Most everybody that comes to wants to be able to provide alcohol in a controlled environment. But if that is a stipulation under our agreement, we would definitely honor it.
I would recommend to have the solicitor go to appear and support.
So I guess that was a motion and a second. Can you see how the vote goes?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
So you have a motion.
I believe Supervisor Banfford made a motion to send us in support. It was seconded by Supervisor Staub. Take a roll call, maybe.
Right, I was going to say, do we have any opposed?
Nay.
And I'm, I'm nay for them, for them going in, in support. I'm okay with our board, our zoning hearing board making the decision.
So two-two, that motion fails, then it remains neutral unless someone makes some other motion.
What if, what if they say we're just going to do wine and beer? Can we do that? And can I move to make it, if they make a concession to say it's wine and beer, which Julia said.
That's a redundant motion.
Yeah, well, you're, that's going to have to be a condition they agree to in front of the zoning hearing. And you, we made a motion to support that. Or what are you asking? And it failed, two-two because of the tie. So what are you, what would be a different motion that you're attempting to make?
You're trying to put a condition on them that it's actually the zoning hearing board's decision to put that condition.
Okay. I'm just trying. I'm trying to help them. That's what I'm trying to do.
I understand the small business. I have nothing against the small business. You seem like a wonderful family. I've heard wonderful things about you personally. My concern is health, safety, and welfare of the township, which is our job.
Yep. So they're free to offer that condition in front of the zoning hearing board if they want when they make their presentation.
I'm sorry.
We were going to say, we appreciate the opportunity and we look forward to sitting down with the zoning board.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Good luck in front of the zoning hearing board.
Yep.
Hey, proclamation of Arbor Day for Tree City, USA. Mary McCallum.
It's an annual event to celebrate Arbor Day. This year, the Roy Rodriguez Annual Arbor Day Tree Giveaway will be held on Saturday, April 27, 2024, at the Township Building Gazebo Park. Montgomery Township has also been named as 2023 Tree City USA and Growth Award recipient. This has been the 27th year as a Tree City USA recipient and the 23rd year receiving the Growth Award. The members of the Shea Tree Commission would like to extend an invitation to the Board of Supervisors to attend this annual event on Saturday, April 27, 2024, to celebrate Arbor Day.
Look forward to it. You know I'm going to be there.
Yes, we got your RSVP.
Yeah. So now therefore, the Board of Supervisors, Board of Supervisors, Montgomery Township, Pennsylvania, do hereby proclaim Saturday 27, I'm sorry, Saturday, April 27, 2024, as Arbor Day in Montgomery Township. And we urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, we urge all citizens to plant trees, to gladden the heart, and promote the well-being of this and future generations dated the 25th day of April 2024. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approve the design of our new Bark Park sign. Greg Reif.
Good evening. Included in the 2024 budget is a sign for the new Montgomery Township Bark Park located at 1101 Nap Road. Enclosed are three proposed designs from Display and Sign Center. The designs were taken before the Montgomery Township Park and Recreation Board on Wednesday, April 10 of 2024, and the park board made a recommendation of Design A. So for tonight, our recommendation would be for the Board of Supervisors to approve a design choice for the new Montgomery Township Bark Park sign.
Okay, so that is what we're, we would be approving, like actually choosing one of these?
Correct.
Oh, okay, so it's not approving for them to choose.
No.
To make a decision, okay. So I love A.
Yeah, it was presented, it was presented to the Parks Board and they selected A, but requested a modification to incorporate our logo, the township logo. And in, they thought maybe they could incorporate it into the tag that the dog is wearing.
That's cute. In the bone part?
Not in the bone, but like in the dog tag part. There was another design that was submitted that was sort of like a birdie. Everybody know birdie? Anyway, and it had, and they had the MT in the little dog tag area, which everybody thought was cute. If that isn't feasible, I think the bone is, is the like next, next best place because it has more.
His little tag is very small.
More real estate to work with there.
Absolutely.
The tag around his neck right now we're talking about?
Yes.
It's very tiny.
Right, yeah, no, it would have to be modified.
Okay.
In order to make that happen. And if that isn't feasible, I think you're right that the bone is the next best place for it.
Okay.
But it should definitely have the township branding on the sign.
Yeah. And I think the park board was probably right. A is my favorite as well.
It's a good one. Okay, so it sounds like we all love A.
The diversity of C. I have to be. But I'm willing to go with the flow because that's how I am.
Okay, so then, with that said, then it looks like A may be the one. So a motion to approve a design, which is A, for the new Montgomery Township Bark Park.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Any opposed?
Any opposed?
I'm fine, it goes with the flow. It's a Bark Park.
Item number 14, authorize advertisement of bid for a gymnasium for replacement. Floyd.
Good evening, everybody. The Community and Recreation Center is approaching its ninth year of operation. In addition to internal planning for its capital replacement needs, the township contracted Dewey Engineering to evaluate, to evaluate the building and development plan for future expenditures based on a variety of factors that include physical condition, energy, sustainability, impact, number of people affected daily, and life expectancy. With the completion of the exterior concrete work, the staff has now turned its attention to the gymnasium floor, which has had issues throughout the entire history of the building. Staff proposes working with Dewey Engineering to specify details of the project and draft the bid document. Project is included in our 2024 capital budget and is estimated at $225,000. Staff recommends the board authorize the advertisement of the bid so staff can work with the engineers to develop a document and get it out to bid as soon as possible.
Okay, any questions? Okay, so I'm going to make a motion to authorize the preparation and advertisement of the bid on Penn Bid for the replacement of the gymnasium floor at the Community and Recreation Center. Motion?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you. Thanks, Floyd.
Thank you.
Number 15, authorization to bid traffic signal preemption upgrades. Greg Reif.
Included in the 2024 budget are upgrades to traffic signal preemption systems, which would convert them from the current less reliable audible system to the more reliable optical system for the safety of emergency responders and motoring public when responding to emergency calls. This will be a multi-phase year project and will begin with upgrading several, several intersections along the Route 463 Horsom Road Corridor and the County Line Road Corridor. Competitive bids will be solicited utilizing Penn Bid website. A total of $100,000 was included in the 2024 capital investment plan for upgrading the traffic signal preemption system. So it would be our recommendation, the Board of Supervisors approve the authorization for the advertisement of the bid.
Any questions? Okay, looking for a motion to authorize the advertisement of the bid for the upgrades to the traffic signal preemption system utilizing Penn Bid.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 16, consider authorization for the sale of municipal equipment by online auction. Brian Shapiro, Director of.
Good evening. The Township by resolution is authorized to dispose of surplus assets through Minusabid, an online auction company. Minusabid assesses fees to the buyer only. The buyer fees are aggregated. There are no charges or fees assessed to the seller, meaning the township. The amount, the administration of the bid will be handled by township staff. The township will have to meet the advertisement required requirements as outlined in the Second Class Township Code. The following items are available to be sold through Minusabid. And if it's okay, I won't list all 17, it's hopefully in your document. Township estimates a total of $15,000 in revenue from the sale of this equipment at auction. It is recommended that the Board of Supervisors authorize the sale of the above-listed items to the online auction company, Minusabid. Once the bids are awarded, the Board of Supervisors will need to pass a resolution authorizing the sale.
Okay, great. Any questions, Brian? Okay, motion to authorize the sale of the above-listed equipment. Do I need to read all of this for, no? Okay. For the above-listed equipment through the online auction company, Minusabid.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Great. Thank you. And item 17, do we have any new business, any old business?
There's no department report to be presented tonight. Chief Wheeler from VMSC will be here to update the board on their operations next month, including the new newly launched community paramedicine program with Jefferson Health.
Great, anything else from anyone? I will make a motion to close our meeting.
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
All in favor, sorry.
Aye.
Thank you.
Have a good night, everyone.